Good evening. The May tenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Marietta Planning Commission is called to order. Would the Secretary please call for a determination of a quorum, please? Here.
Vice Chair Harlan?
Here.
Commissioner Rummen?
Here.
Commissioner Wojcik?
Here.
Commissioner Lapaglia?
Here.
Let the record reflect all members are present.
And if we could move on to the Fledge of Allegiance and Commissioner Rummen will lead us in the...
Yes, please join me. Place your hand over your heart as we salute our nation's flag. Ready? Begin.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now be moving on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes in the agenda?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Let's call for a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, can you please do a roll call vote?
Chair Fisher?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harlan?
Aye.
Commissioner Rummen?
Aye.
Commissioner Wojcik?
Aye.
Commissioner Lapaglia?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. At this time, we will take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any subject pertaining to city business, which does not relate to any item listed on the agenda or the consent calendar. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Thank you, Chair. We do not have any non-agenda public comments.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We're now moving on to discussion item. And the discussion item is a new proposed additions to the capital improvement plan for year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, dash twenty twenty-seven, twenty-eight, in conformance with the City of Marietta general plan of twenty thirty-five. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Fisher, Vice Chair Harlan, Commissioners Lapaglia, Rummen, and Wojcik, city staff, and members of the public. I'm Aron Mendoza, financial analyst from the Finance Department. And with me is Principal Civil Engineer Jeff Hitch of the Public Works Department, presenting the proposed additions to the capital improvement plan for fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four through twenty-seven, twenty-eight, for general plan twenty thirty-five conformity. Seated in the audience, we have the different project managers from all the departments involved in the process. Perfect, thank you. The agenda for this part of the meeting before you tonight is to present the CIP summary, the new proposed CIP projects, the current twenty-three, twenty-four CIP projects presented by Public Works, regionally significant projects, future actions, and the recommended action The CIP, or the Capital Improvement Plan, is a long-range, five-years planning for all individual capital improvement projects and funding sources. The plan prioritizes projects over the next five fiscal years based on community needs, but only appropriates funding for the first year of the plan. The funding for capital projects comes from a variety of sources, but for the most part, these funds are restricted for specific types of capital project construction. These restricted funds are not available to be spent on ongoing operation, operating costs. The proposed new projects were presented to the City Council through a budget workshop on May second. And as required by Government Code Section six five four zero one, city staff is bringing forward these proposed additions to the City Planning Commission for review and report if the proposed additions to the CIP conforms with the city's general plan. In June twenty twenty-three, a public hearing will be held, and the proposed final CIP plan and budget will be presented and adopted. The next few slides I am presenting on behalf of the other departments, which are the proposed citywide projects for fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four. Tonight present in the meeting are the respective departmental project managers to answer any detailed questions that you may have about the new projects after our presentation. The Administrative Services Department has three proposed projects, namely the Alderwood Community Center Technology, paid for the landscape and lighting District twenty-five to increase the usability of the facility and enhance the security and technology; City Hall Fire Station One Emergency Generator Update, it's paid for by grant through FEMA; and the proposed action plans for the ADA Transition Plan by addressing the physical barriers and also align with future CIP projects. The Community Services Department, we'll start with the Library Division, has three projects, namely the Library Community Room and retrofit technology is to enhance the usability of the room and to make it more available for use by the community and to hold events; the Pollinator Garden Project, paid in part by a grant from the California State Library and Western Municipal Water District, is to address the need for local facilities to institute sustainable landscaping in the community, and also address the growing threats to diminishing pollinator populations. The Library Storetime and Children's Air Expansion is also paid in part by grant from the California State Library for approximately one point five million dollars. The Parks and Recreation Division is proposing the Calooc's Pool Replacement Project. This project is going to be funded in part by ARPA. Parks and Rec will also add five additional totlot projects at the North Star area, which is the Montevista, North Star, and Palomar Parks, as well as the Firefighters Park and Shade Covers at Mapleton Park. Last but not the least is the addition of EV charging stations at Los Alamos Hill Sports Park, paid for in part by the subvention funds from the AQMD or the South Coast Air Quality Management District. The Fire Department has the following proposed projects: Emergency Operations Center laptops and docking stations so staff can perform duties during an activated EOC; the regional training facility study is to support public safety training requirements; and future Type One fire truck replacing an over twenty-one-year-old engine; and the Fire Station Six study is to identify and design in the northeastern portion of the city to serve those residents in that location. There are also improvements to Fire Stations One through Three and a potential future project for Fire Station Five and replacements to approximately seventy-two self-contained breathing apparatus equipment. The Police Department has three projects, namely the Mobile Command Center, which will serve as a backup EOC. The MCC would benefit multiple departments and will have the technology to do so. There are also upcoming improvements to the PD Administration and Traffic Bureau offices. These are to improve ergonomics, enhance storage of sensitive information, and to address the need due to the addition of personnel. And with that, I conclude my portion of the presentation, and will now turn it over to Principal Civil Engineer Jeff Hitch.
My name is Jeff Hitch, Principal Civil Engineer, Engineering, Public Works Engineering Department. Glad to be here this evening, Chair Fisher, Vice Chair Harlan, and fellow commissioners. Here we're going to talk about the six new projects that we have programmed coming into this next year. I'm also going to briefly describe, you know, this is always a good opportunity for me to, you know, present in front of the Planning Commission, all of the activities that we currently have going underway. We usually find this as a good opportunity to get you up to speed with what the city's doing on the capital side, in particular as it relates to road improvement projects around the city, understanding that this has an impact on, on land development activities as well around the city. Sometimes these, these issues collaborate with each other, if you will. So it's important to get everybody up to speed. And then we'll talk about some regionally significant projects, as that's always interesting to kind of discuss as well. So kind of venturing into just the new programs that we have, the six new projects that we're talking about, some of these, like the pedestrian safety enhancement projects or annual projects that we do, we receive community development block grant funds annually from Riverside County. It's HUD money that comes to us, and it's, it's suitable for using for ADA enhancements. We take these opportunities to upgrade the ramps, as you see here in the photo, pedestrian ramps that are within our public right-of-way, and we can upgrade those throughout the city to improve ADA enhancements in the community. We have this project and the next project. This is Vista Marietta. This is kind of in the, in the, what we used to refer to as the Golden Triangle area between Marietta Hot Springs Road and Los Alamos Road, bounded by the fifteen and the two fifteen. Vista Marietta Road is a largely dirt road that comes off of Los Alamos and then connects to the future Monroe Avenue. You can see kind of in this photo the yellow, a lot, future alignment of Monroe Avenue that does not exist today. Vista Marietta Road is a dirt road that does exist. Because of some, some development that's occurring in that, or proposed development that's proposed to occur in this area, multifamily development specifically, there's a need to add Vista Marietta Road as a capital project. We may be taking, for example, we may be taking cash and lieu from one or more of these projects. This placing a CIP project in, in our, in our budget gives us the ability to place funds from development into that project, and then eventually the city can build, build that if that becomes needed, if it's not built by development. Kind of the same story, so Monroe Avenue is the other road that we're talking about that would be connecting Marietta Hot Springs to Los Alamos. The expensive part with this piece of road, in the case of Vista Marietta Road, there's already largely a sixty-foot dedicated right-of-way through there, so a right-of-way expense would not be that great. That would keep that project in line with maybe a three or four million dollar expenditure for construction, not anticipating substantial environmental concerns. Monroe Avenue is a different story. There's almost no red, right-of-way dedicated through there. A right-of-way is very expensive. And then there's some blue line streams that, that Monroe Avenue would be crossing, which would require substantial mitigation, environmental mitigation associated with doing that work. That concludes Monroe Avenue, really pushes Monroe Avenue up to somewhere in the avenue of a ten million dollar project, if we were to try to construct something like that today. We're anticipating some of the development in the area to construct portions of that road, maybe contributing cash and lieu as, as, as part of, as part of their development responsibilities. If, if the two ends, for example, get built, and the middle piece is left remaining and is too difficult for development to, to build, that's potentially where CA, the CIP would come into play. So that's the story with Monroe Avenue and why we're adding it. Line F is another project. Line F is a master drainage plan, facility, drainage facility that exists. There's several parts that are pre-existing that kind of peril, that run from the Calooc's Detention Basin. We're on the east side of the fifteen freeway, just north of Calooc's, off of Monroe, sorry. So that basin drains into, into this drainage. And this, the drainage, after it crosses the freeway, enters into a trapezoidal concrete line channel. The picture on the right, you can see that channel as it approaches Washington Avenue. That channel kind of runs parallel to Calmia Street, just on the north side of Calmia. Once it passes Washington Avenue, it enters into a, it's an undeveloped channel. The reason it's kind of undeveloped is, is due to the fact that Marietta Creek is not fully widened. There are plans in the, probably in the distant future, to widen and lower Marietta Creek all the way up to where Line F is contributory towards it, right there at Calmia Street. In this case, we've been waiting for Marietta Creek to develop, but I, we, at this point, we feel it's, it's too far away, and this channel needs some, needs some work in order to help with development in that community and to provide safer drainage for the homes on the south side of Calmia Street between New Clay and the creek. Right now, many of those homes are in the floodplain. Developing Line F would help with development of, of the parcels in those areas, as well as remove those homes on the south side of Calmia from the floodplain. Our next asphalt overlay, what we typically refer to as a roadway rehabilitation project that we're planning on doing is Marietta Hot Springs Road from Whitewood to Margarita. If you've driven through there, you've noticed that there's, you know, that, I think that was last overlaid about nine years ago. It's, it's the heaviest-traveled road in town, Marietta Hot Springs Road. It's now developing potholes, requiring constant attention by our maintenance department. So that, that project is anticipated to, to be designed going into next year. And then, in addition to that, Clinton Keith Road from our far western boundary, down across the frontage of Bear Creek, down to Grand Avenue, so that section of Clinton Keith Road would be, would be covered. Slurry seals, we've been doing slurry seals, the, we have a slurry seal program, and we've been finally catching up. We had quite a few years where we had, had deferred slurry seal work because of some, largely because of the Great Recession. When we got hit with that, we had lost some staff, and this program kind of fell to the wayside, so to speak. We've now, for the most part, have cut up. We're in the final year now of, of our, of our fourth slurry seal. We do slurry seals, the plan is to do a quarter of the city every other year, so it's an eight-year program. Slurry would be applied to the streets basically every eight years, is what the plan is. Slurry seals are, it's a coating that gets placed, if you're not familiar with that, it's an asphalt emulsion with some aggregate that gets placed on residential city streets. We don't place them on major streets like Marietta Hot Springs, because it's a very thin material that gets placed down. Heavy traffic will tend to erode away the slurry material, effectively rendering it useless after a year or so. Works very well in our, in our residential communities and tends to last eight to ten years. You start to see it, you know, coming off your residential street, you can kind of see it needs to be redone. And we're, we're kind of seeing, it's in that eight to ten-year timeframe is kind of when it needs to be replaced. So we're now back on track to doing twenty-five percent every other year. Our typical slurry program typically is running with a cost of about three million dollars every other year. So that kind of brings us through the new projects that we, that we're plant, that we're putting together for this year. Now I'm going to kind of talk you through projects that we currently have in design or in various stages of design. Many of the projects we have have been in design for quite a few years. This next one is certainly one of those. Marietta Hot Springs Road widening, we actually started working on this probably over ten years ago, was, you know, delayed for a period of time because of the recession and staffing losses within the city. And now we're currently being delayed because of right-of-way acquisition. Believe we are getting close to having the right-of-way acquisition wrapped up. We have, I think we have some court proceedings, we have to, we're still dealing with one property owner. As soon as that's wrapped up, we're going to be ready to get these plans out to bid. We are anticipating this project being under construction later this fall, maybe early winter. This is widening Marietta Hot Springs Road from Margarita to Winchester Road, and this would kind of complete Marietta Hot Springs Road to a full six-lane arterial. Marietta Hot Springs Road and Alta Marietta Turnpocket, this is looking eastbound at, at the Sam's Club signal there at Alta Marietta. Anybody who's driven that road is familiar with the backup that occurs there because of all the cars that want to turn right, and then the one car that wants to go straight at the red light stops all the cars that want to turn right. So we've talked about for years to put in a right turn pocket at that location. Unfortunately, putting a turn pocket there requires us to relocate a pretty sizable pressure-reducing station. There's an underground pressure-reducing station that nobody knew was there, has to be relocated. It's actually in the driveway, you can't see it in this photo. And we're still working with Eastern on finalizing those plans. We anticipate this project being out to, out to bid later this summer. So look forward to that. We're going to do our best not to have that project and the widening project under construction at the same time, and the asphalt overlay, right? So we have three major asphalt projects or construction projects on Hot Springs between two fifteen and Winchester, so pretty significant efforts through there that should be underway various times throughout the year. Madison Avenue, Guadalupe Elm Street, this project's been on the books now for a little while. We're now advancing this pretty rapidly. We anticipate this, the design kind of being largely completed on this middle of next year, and having projects, having the project out to bid by the end of twenty-four, potentially under construction in early twenty-five. Madison Avenue used to be a major classification roadway. We downgraded it in the last general plan update to a secondary roadway, which kind of delayed this project. If you've seen Madison Avenue, Madison Avenue was originally built as a temporary access road while Jefferson Avenue was constructed. I don't know if anybody remembers when Jefferson Avenue was under construction, but that was, what, twenty-some years ago, twenty-five years ago, probably? Madison Avenue was supposed to be just a temporary construction road, and we've been kind of pasting it together over the years, so it's in significant disrepair. As you can see in the vertical profile on here, we're taking off a lot of the peaks, filling in the valleys. It'll be a pretty substantial effort running through there. So that's a substantial project that you'll see coming forward in the coming years. It does require environmental permitting, which takes a year or so to perfect, and we're, like I said, currently in design, about thirty percent on that. In pavement LED-lighted crosswalks, this project, believe we have the plans generally completed, looking to get these out to bid as staffing, you know, permitting. These are kind of a, we earned a Highway Safety Improvement Program grant to pay for part, part of these improvements. These will provide these lighted pucks that would be placed at the crosswalks. We identified five locations, five crosswalk locations near schools that are at mid-block crosswalks that are not currently regulated. So these will come with a, with a push button that you can activate the lights, and then we anticipate we'll also have rectangular rapid flashing beacons also posted on, on signs on both sides of the crosswalk as well. I would expect that to be completed before the end of the year. Traffic signal activity, we've got a, a traffic signal modification that's currently under construction. They just received their poles. Right now, traffic signal poles take about six months to acquire, six to nine months to acquire. That's part of that, the supply-delivery issues that the country has been experiencing. They now have received the poles, they, they've started work on the project about six months ago. They probably have another month, a month and a half of construction activity to do the revisions here. That signal modification will be adding some left-turn signaling there into, off of Milkwood and Leafwood. And then the Washington Weeping Willow, Washington Avenue and Weeping Willow is, would be a brand-new traffic signal located at that location. It's, the design is now complete. We're just perfecting the bid specifications, getting that ready to put out to bid this summer. That, that work will probably be finished early twenty-four. Town Square Park Parking Lot, did say lots on there on the slide, so it's a typo. We actually had originally planned to do a couple of parking lots, and we've kind of reduced it down to one. This is to provide support for the amphitheater that was, you know, constructed several years ago, and just provide additional parking for the downtown community and the general area. Kind of along with this, we're looking at doing some landscaping improvements associated with the parking lot, and then along Calmia Street to kind of add trees to kind of mimic what the landscaping looks like along Jefferson Avenue to help beautify kind of the town square improvement area. And then we're also evaluating, putting together a monument wall at the corner of Calmia and Jefferson. This would be kind of a entry statement into our town square, into our historic downtown area, and an entry point to our civic center area. It's a kind of a large endeavor, so we're looking to see whether or not that's going to be viable or feasible, and if that's something council will support. City Corporation Yard upgrades, we're adding a couple of temporary buildings, a fourteen-by-sixty and a twenty-four-by-sixty building over kind of behind the existing building. Those are the two buildings that are kind of shown here in red. This is the existing building that our Public Works Maintenance Crews sit out of. Because of the significant number of new hires that the city has incurred over the years, we're needing more space here in City Hall. And then I think in addition to that, our Public Works Parks Crews are residing up at a, kind of a really old house, and they're needing new, new facilities. These, these two buildings are for Public Works Parks Crews, as well as our Public Works Inspection folks would all be utilizing these facilities down in our Public Works We're actively working on Fire Station Number One. This is one of the projects that are, that Mr. Mendoza had referenced, is a project for the, an upgrade to Fire Station One. Concrete in there is failing. This project is to replace all of the concrete, as you see in red, within there, as well as connect that fire station into a new sewer line. There is a sewer connection in Juniper Street, so we're going to perfect that. Right now, the fire station still operates on a septic tank. So this will provide upgrades to that fire station. Menifee Road, anybody who's driven on Clinton Keith and tried to take that dirt road between Clinton Keith and Los Alamos may have noticed that the, it's pretty rutted and, and substantial kind of disrepair. The, when the county built Clinton Keith Road, they did not plan for that, unfortunately did not plan for the, the pavement of that portion of Menifee Road. It's kind of left a pretty substantial project for us, even though it's only about a thousand feet of roadway. So this little piece of road has environmental concerns because of MSHCP issues, our Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan. There's a little stream that runs across through there, so there's a potential for regulatory issues that we're looking at to see if those are going to be an issue. And at the moment, we're just trying to get two, two lanes of paved road through there, something that should really only cost about a half a million dollars, and we're probably, we're looking at a quarter million dollars just in design and environmental fees and trying to get this little project done. So kind of an expensive little project to get this fixed, but depending on the nature of the environmental issues that we run into, we're hoping to have this project under construction in twenty twenty-four. Open channel maintenance program, we have quite a few channels around town. Not all of them look like this one. This is Line G. This is at the near, this is the picture, the main picture in the screen is looking down Cali de los Oro to the west. The box culvert is the box culvert that crosses under Washington Avenue. That box, if it was, if it had, was at its ultimate condition, would have four feet of freeboard. As you can see there in the photo, it's about eighteen inches. And so this is the sedimentation that occurs from the channel upstream of this. Several fixes for this, but this, in order to get in and maintain these channels of this nature throughout this, throughout the community, we have to have regulatory agency permit. permits to do so. Doesn't make sense to do that one at a time, so we are working on an annualized permit with each of those agencies. It's a pretty daunting endeavor. I'm anticipating this project, by the time it's done, is going to be in the order of magnitude of one to two million dollars to eventually process. We would have mitigation fees that we would have to pay to, to deal with the fact that we would be disturbing these on an annual basis. But they would allow us to get in and maintain these channels. As you see there on the right side, you can see there's a culvert that actually enters that channel there and it's almost completely submerged. There are other pipes within this channel that are completely submerged that drain off the commercial development adjacent to it. So you can see the need for being able to get in and do that work. This project is anticipated to take several years to complete and it's currently underway. Now talking just briefly about a couple of regionally significant projects. Probably the biggest one that's here in the city is I-215 Keller Road Interchange. It's a pretty significant project. It's about a fifty million dollar project. We're still twenty or so million unfunded. We've gotten some recent funding from, from the Fed's Calvert's Office, I think came up with about ten million dollars for us for this project, but we still have more that we need to acquire. This would feature a couple of large roundabouts. These would be the first roundabouts of their kind in the city of Marietta. If you've been to Morongo and the Ten Freeway, where Morongo is located, you've seen similar roundabouts at that location. This would be very similar to that. We're excited about introducing these types of roundabouts to this community. They provide a safer opportunity for motorists as there's less points of conflict. I know people get confused by roundabouts, but they, we generally, from what we've seen in studies, they reduce traffic collisions. And in particular, they reduce the traffic collisions that cause injury such as T-bone type accidents. The environmental document is currently out for review and we're anticipating that environmental document to be wrapped up in twenty twenty-four. Funding permitted, we would be able to put this out to construction shortly thereafter, so it'll depend on when the funding comes to pass. Clinton Keith Road Phase Three is currently under construction. I kind of bring this up. They are currently working on a couple of bridges. One main bridge that'll be in the city. There's another bridge system, culvert system, arch culvert system that's being built in the county. This project crosses the city boundary lines. This will complete the Clinton Keith connection. Right now, the section between Leon and Winchester Road is missing and that is what this is constructing. This is expected to be completed sometime later this year. It was supposed to be completed in June, but I think they're a couple of months behind schedule. I would expect them to be opening this later this fall or late summer. And to be clear, that project is a Riverside County project, so Riverside County actually built all of Clinton Keith. That was built through here. It's not actually a city project, even though it's partly in the city. And then finally is French Valley Parkway Phase Two. This project was recently bid and awarded by the City of Temecula. It's a City of Temecula project. It's been much anticipated. We're very anxious for this as we believe it will help with reducing the congestion in particular on northbound fifteen through the City of Temecula. The merging of traffic on from Winchester Road and then the weaving ahead of the Y is what's really contributing to this. This project should significantly enhance circulation through there and that is being done by these, what they call auxiliary lanes that you see kind of on the right side of this red line. It's a rendition of what that will eventually look like. Coming off of Winchester Road, you will be entering these auxiliary lanes. You won't be getting on the main line. If you want to go to the two fifteen, you'll stay to the left and merge with the traffic after the Y. If you're going on the fifteen, you'll stay on the lanes on the right where it says fifteen there and you'll do the, you'll approach the flyover and then, and then enter traffic after the Y as well. So that is what's going to help with the merging situation. You won't have the merging happening just before the Y as it happens today. The final phase of French Valley Parkway is the actual interchange itself or the access on the on-ramps and off-ramps and the flyover there at French Valley Parkway. French Valley Parkway is currently Date Street on Temecula's side and Cherry Street on Marietta's side. That project is, we're kind of estimating is on the hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty, hundred and forty million dollar range. And our understanding is Temecula does not have the funding for it currently and I don't believe they have, have an estimate at the moment of when that's going to be built. This project just started construction. I know there's contractors out on the ground, boots on the ground now. I believe they will be, this is a twenty-two to twenty-four month project, so I would expect this to be wrapping up in twenty twenty-five. And that kind of, that wraps up all of the, at least of the engineering projects that we have currently underway. And I'll be here to answer any questions, but I'll turn this back over to Mr. Mendoza to wrap up the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hitch. For the future actions, I stated earlier, June twenty twenty-three is the public hearing before the city council. Per California Government Code six five four zero three, the city council adopts the five year plan to appropriate funding for new projects and amends existing projects as needed. And the recommended action before you tonight is to find a, make a finding to the city council that the new proposed additions to the capital improvement plan, fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four through twenty-seven, twenty-eight are in conformance with the City of Marietta General Plan twenty thirty-five. And that is the end of our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you both for a great job in presenting a very interesting subject. And I appreciate the visualness of the projects along with the interpretation of verbalization of it, so it's very good. Do we have any questions from the commissioners? And Michael, I'll start with you. Commissioner Paglia.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, guys. How you doing? Good? Line F, if we can pull Line F up, is this a, is this a final construction or is this like a temporary fix coming through Washington down Calmia?
Thank you for the question, Commissioner Paglia. It's a good question and the answer is probably yes. We probably will be doing a little bit of both. We'll probably have an interim fix kind of built into an ultimate scenario, if that can sort of make sense. The, at the end of the day, the Marietta Creek is going to widen from its probably current width of about a hundred feet to about three hundred feet wide, bottom width. Anybody who's been out to Guava Bridge and Ivy Bridge, if you're looking at that, a lot of people are scratching their heads trying to figure out, well, who built this bridge and why is it so long? Those were built for the ultimate widening of Marietta Creek. So in addition to Marietta Creek being widened, it's also supposed to be lowered. We think we're going to have problems if we try to build an ultimate design, getting it to land at Marietta Creek, if Marietta Creek's going to be widened in the future. So we don't know what that's going to look like yet. And so there needs to be some alternative analysis to see what that would look like. We're also concerned about the narrowness of Line F between the residential homes and Calmia Street. Upstream of Line F, of Washington Avenue, the channel is a hundred feet wide total, the channel plus the access roads on both sides. That's a pretty standard. If you look at the channel upstream of Washington, you can see there's a, maybe a fifteen foot gravel access road on both sides of the trapezoidal channel. It's a standard flood control design and this facility will likely be a flood control facility in the future. Our anticipation is that we would be working with flood control on this project and that this would still be a flood control facility. If you look downstream, in order to get that to fit into the same hundred foot wide channel, that would mean that we would have, it would maximize that, that space between the homes and Calmia Street. The problem is, we don't think, from a regulatory standpoint, we're going to be able to build a full concrete trap channel through that stretch. We, I don't, the mitigation cost would probably be too extreme to be able to permit something like that if we could even get it permitted. So we're likely looking at some sort of a soft bottom channel with buttressed side slopes, either gabion baskets or concrete side slopes to help reduce the kind of mitigation cost. But doing a soft bottom channel requires you to widen the channel. Well, we don't, we're constrained by space. We could be looking at a scenario where we have some sort of a soft bottom channel with maybe a box culvert running underneath Calmia Street. So there's several hybrid solutions we could look at. Another solution might be still utilizing Calmia Street as, as part of the conveyance in such a way that we still provide access to homes down Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue. So there's, the answer is right now is we don't know. It'd be nice if we could do an ultimate channel here on day one, but there's a lot of constraints. So we may have an interim condition with like an ultimate plan on how to get to the ultimate scenario that will eventually be built once Marietta Creek gets extended.
Okay. And so does the Riverside County Flood Control have funding for this and where does the funding come for this, you know, temporary fix?
So we've got, we currently have about four million dollars in area drainage fees that could be applied to this project. We don't know what kind of funding flood control would be able to make available. We think flood control would be able to support this project. Unclear how much funding that they would provide. That's something that we would be applying for. We're planning on putting a package together to apply for their annual kind of application process. They do an annual CIP just like we do. I believe there's, kicks off in November is when they start reviewing those issues.
To my knowledge, if, if a Riverside County flood control regulated channel endangers life and land, it, it kind of puts it in a category where it's acted on a little bit more rapidly. Is that, is that true to your knowledge or, you know, does that help? Because obviously if this is undersized and if it is against the back of the houses and bordering this land, has that been talked about or is that something that could be?
I do believe that you're correct, that they would look at something that would be life threatening. I think the downside to this is, we've been, this has been serving the community relatively well for the, right now, we, we place K-Rail up Calmia Street, block off Fifth Avenue and Fourth Avenue. We've, we effectively have created a levy system to protect the homes. If we didn't put that levy system in place, temporary levy system, then those homes would be experiencing flooding situations.
Which is kind of like a part three to my, my question here is Calmia kind of seems it serves as such a, you know, a stormwater discharge down to the creek, right? You know, which of course isn't, isn't permanent. Now we've got the Pimlico Ranch development coming in, it's going to be a lot more traffic heading down Calmia. And if, when that gets closed like it does every rainstorm, that obviously gets pushed over to B Street, kind of, you know, I don't want to say overwhelming B Street, but if we've got thirty-five homes being built there and further development, blah, blah, blah. My, my next kind of part three to the question is, is this Calmia Street improvement tie into the ultimate design for this Line F? Or is it going to continue to serve as this stormwater discharge from Washington and above
Well, the intention would be for Line F to be constructed in such a way that Calmia Street would function as it currently does today. I would envision that we'd probably be raising Calmia Street a little bit and the idea would be to take the, right now, Calmia Street is in a V section.
Like a swale, yeah.
Right, an inverted street section. What we normally see as a crown, it's inverted, right? The idea would be to put it back to a crown situation and, and have Line F to be able to handle itself outside of Calmia Street. That would be the, the idea. In a perfect world, that's what we want to have happen. The question is whether or not we can get that accomplished, given the constraints that we have, the physical constraints and then the lack of Marietta Creek being built. So we won't know that until we run some, some additional analysis. At the end of the day, Calmia Street will, will continue to maintain access. We're not going to take away the access of Calmia Street. You know, every time we have rain event, we could be, I think you will still, it's a low water crossing, it's not a bridge. So it's, it will still continue to close during significant rain events. It'll always have to close until an actual bridge is constructed, if one was to ever be constructed. We don't currently have any plans to build a bridge there. So right now, the access to the west side of town is going to be B Street and Ivy Street. And well, Guava Street as well for that matter.
Right. Okay. All right. So all in all, it is kind of a bit of a temporary, temporary fix with some more long-term effective. Okay.
That's, that's the idea. And I think to get back to your original statement, what you say is absolutely true. Certainly when we approach flood control, we would be identifying, you know, the, the need for this and the dangers if this is not implemented, right? If our temporary levy system, you know, fails during a big rain event, then homes could be flooded.
Yeah.
And that's a significant concern for us in engineering. And so those are issues that we're going to try to, to rectify and hopefully this project will be able to, you know, resolve those issues.
Absolutely. It'd be great to, great to have, have the flood control fund, fund a project like this for, for our improvement. You know, the more, the more multifamily getting built on this side of town, the more watershed off the roofs, the more, I mean, you know, it's obvious stuff that you guys know a hundred times more than I do, but I like that. So yeah, press, press flood control as hard as you guys can. The MHS rehab, the slurry, if you guys can flip to that. This, this has, this is before, this is going to be west of the Marietta Hot Springs widening, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So this, this is, this is all permanent, it's not getting wider in this area, so it's...
Yeah, this is just a resurfacing project of, of the existing road.
But we're not going to resurface the road this year and then tear it up next year to widen it because the widening is all east of this?
Correct. Yeah, the widening actually starts right there at Margarita. Technically, the project starts at Margarita, but we're not really widening through there. We do have some median improvements that will, that will take place kind of through there. Really, the widening really kind of starts at Via Princessa, which is kind of the next street, you can't see it on this slide, like kind of the next street east of Margarita, Via Princessa East, I should say.
Okay.
But yeah, that's, that's where most of that widening starts. We will have a little bit of overlay between Margarita and Via Princessa. You know, by the time we're done with those two projects, effectively you're going to have what appears to be a brand new road between Whitewood and Winchester.
Yeah, no, it turns out nice. I drive Nutmeg every day on my commute and I think that was slurry last year or a year and a half ago and it's, it's, it gives it a, a good, good healthy condition. Looks nice.
And that was, just to be clear, that was an overlay that was done, wasn't slurry.
That was an overlay?
Yeah. For, for, yeah, we used rubberized asphalt actually on that.
So did this slurry affect in your neighborhood too?
I think so. Nutmeg from, that was from Jefferson Avenue.
Yeah, Jefferson up to Jackson. So that was an overlay?
That was an overlay, yeah.
Oh, okay. Can we get a, like a, like a Google Maps image, an overview of the turn pocket in, on MHS, Marietta Hot Springs, is that possible? Or can we just look at the presentation?
Hey Greg, is that a possibility to get a...
Get like a Google Maps?
Google Maps overview of Marietta Hot Springs Road at Alto Marietta?
I probably should have finished my questions from the presentation, but we'll come back to that.
So just to give you a brief overview on, we talked about overlay while we get a little break here, but the overlay program that we do is all largely based on our, we do an evaluation of all of our streets. We look at all of our regional streets. We pay a consultant to go out and do an evaluation of the condition of the streets. It's, it's called a PCI or a pavement condition index. And then we use those, that index to generate a list of the worst streets that are in town, right? So we don't, you know, I think in years past, when the city was newer, you used to be able to drive down the street and say, hey, that one's bad, that one's bad. And then that's kind of how you would select it. Now we're kind of getting to the point where we need, we need a little bit more delineation as to which streets kind of need it more than others. So when you see, and then in part, the decisions are also based on how much maintenance activity is being done by our maintenance crews. So the streets that were selected this year were based on that. In upcoming years, for example... In upcoming years, for example, we're gonna be doing a stretch of Jefferson Avenue from Mira to Hot Springs down to at least Nutmeg, if not even a little bit up the hill. Pretty long stretch of Jefferson Avenue. But as you, if you drive it today, you'll notice it's, it's getting into some significant disrepair. The pavement condition in there is probably around fifty percent type things. Is what we're seeing, so.
Interesting, great.
Can you zoom into?
Yeah, and if you could.
Intersection of Hot Springs.
Open up like the satellite layer as well.
Sam, right there at Alta Marietta? The Sam's Club entrance.
Just west of Jackson.
Have the mouse right there and.
I got you, perfect.
Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah, click on the layers to the satellite. So, you know, I've just, I, I drive this often as well, going down Mira to Hot Springs. And you've got, you've got a access road to the east of where it says Alberto's Mexican Food. So just past the main entrance, past Alta Marietta. Right, zoom down there a little bit more? So ha- has there been any consideration? Because this is like, like the most unused access, kind of ingress and egress, you know, in this shopping center. And I just think to myself that like if there was a way to being it's so expensive and it's such a tight area to get a turn pocket back at Shell. If there was maybe an opportunity to utilize this, this, this ingress here. I don't know, I just, like I said, something that I, I drive by on a daily basis and I use that because it gets so backed up turning into the Shell. And you can stay in the middle lane and then just switch over quickly and, you know, you kind of gotta dodge this, this, this island here. But I don't know, just, just an idea to, to rattle around, I'm sure you guys have. But if it would be better to maybe put a turn pocket in here or maybe eliminate the entrance turning into Alta Marietta. I don't know what's underground, obviously beneath this, but it's just something that, you know, crosses my mind daily. So I wanted to get your thoughts on that, or if you guys have explored any other option other than making a turn pocket.
Yeah, appreciate the, the question on that. Certainly, we, it's something we can take a look at. We are pretty advanced on this other project, I mean, the plans are basically complete, the design plans are basically complete. We have some last minute revisions because of Eastern on the water infrastructure revisions. I mean, so we can, we can evaluate it. I, I think the concern I would have, I think with this other turn pocket is just going to be the, disappeared, but the, that turn pocket doesn't access Sam's Club directly, which would really start to create potential problems on the internal circulation within the center. If people were entering this other turn pocket to get to Sam's Club, for example, which is kind of the main driving you know, traffic generator, if you will. Then all the traffic would then be going through this, through the kind of zoom in here a little bit. So this intersection gets pretty congested.
Yeah, it's bad.
If all the circulation was now starting to come in through here, plus still circulation coming in through here, this could create a, a log jam or, or a potential problem there. Certainly, I can run this by our traffic engineer and we can see if there's opportunities there or options there that we can, that, that we can look at. Maybe that we haven't looked at before.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's, it's a little stretch of, of, of land that doesn't get used, you know, for the same, for the same exact reason of entering the whole facility. So, yeah, maybe mention it to him and see if there's an opportunity there. You know, along with this intersection, it's, it's used so often as like a cut through to get to Jackson, which drives me crazy. I go to Jackson as it's engineered and I swear, nine out of ten times, it's, it's faster to go down to Jackson, hang a right and then come back up, you know, you, you pick a car out that you're behind, turning in to cut through or whatever, not, you know, happens every time. But, you know, it wasn't obviously designed for that, is, is there any like concern? Or is there anything that we, we, we would want to do about eliminating that, or it just kind of is what it is and not gonna change?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't, I don't see, we, we've looked at that issue on numerous occasions because we get a lot of complaints from the neighbors over on the, on the east side. There's not really a lot that can be done when you have situations like this. I mean, if you were to try to close down that access point, now you're, you're funneling all the traffic now out through this one location or out the other backside access over behind Sam's Club. So it, it really would be constraining the development, we'd get a, a lot of complaints, I think, from the, the development itself. And frankly, they're the ones that, that get all the traffic and they cut through traffic, we don't get any complaints from them. They don't complain about the fact that there's more traffic going through their center.
Right, it's funny, I, I feel, I feel like it's a double edged sword, like it almost sometimes deters people from going there because it's so congested. And, you know, half the people are cutting through to go to Jackson, to go to Temecula or whatever, but.
Normally, we see, when we have people asking for changes like that, it would be coming from the center saying, there's, there's just too much. Deal with it, it's too much cut through, we need to get that cut through out of here, and the center has not approached us at all that I'm aware of. So at the moment, we're kind of letting it go, but we always try to keep an eye on, on these things. Of course, we don't have any, this is all the center's private property, this is not something that we have control over. You know, the inside circulation that takes place within this access road. We have influence potentially with the shopping center, but it's, it's frankly, it's not our property to, or right away.
Okay, all right, well, I'll just keep going down to Jackson and doing my thing. Let's see, let's jump to the, I'm just curious, the French Valley Parkway design, I saw that, that's just an artist rendering. But is the, back on the presentation, but is the, is the design pretty much dedicated to take the traffic from Winchester? So it's not really gonna affect what the freeway has, it's gonna, it's gonna take the, the entrance to Winchester and kind of dedicate those vehicles onto the, onto the freeways properly?
Which, which property?
The French Valley Park, excuse me. Yeah, the French Valley Parkway, right? Phase two? So is it going to just be dedicated to the entrance from Winchester? And then taking the flyover onto the fifteen northbound?
So the, yeah, let me, let me see if I can pull up the slide, it might be easier to see on the, actually, I don't know that you actually get to see it all the way over from.
It's just an artist rendering, I get that, it's not like the actual design, but.
Yeah, there might be enough to see, so Winchester Road is, 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 you know, kind of further to the south. In fact, you can't even see in this picture.
The dealership.
Even, even French Valley Parkway is, is further to the south. So these auxiliary lanes are gonna start at Winchester Road, and they're gonna continue in a separated fashion. So what you, the red line that you see there is gonna be K rail effectively. I mean, it's gonna be a built, what you normally see on a freeway, not an actual, what we call a K rail, but a concrete delineator, basically. And that will extend from Winchester Road past the French Valley Interchange when that goes in. So you're gonna, these auxiliary lanes that you see will start at Winchester Road, continue to the future French Valley Parkway interchange when that gets built. And then extend all the way up to the Y as you see here. So the auxiliary lanes will stay separated, and, but it all starts at Winchester Road.
Okay, so if you're heading northbound from, you know, from Temecula Valley Parkway or, or whatever, you won't, you will not be able to get inside this, this red line inside the K rail, you will stay on what's now the existing highway, and this will just be dedicated for Winchester only.
Correct. And the, and the future French Valley Parkway.
Yeah, and I saw that, you're right, they're, they are under construction, Flatiron, I think was awarded it, I, I saw they, they have their, their silos up for the concrete, so that's exciting to have.
Seventy, seventy-three million dollar, I think, project is what was awarded.
That's nice. Oh, cool, I'm excited about that, I think that'll relieve a bunch of traffic. Okay, the open channel maintenance program, and you said that there's, you guys are applying for like an annual permit? Is that through Riverside County Flood Control? Or is that through?
It would be.
Different layers of everybody?
It would be the, through the three regulatory agencies, primarily, it's gonna be, be with the state, state water.
Water board?
The, it's the Water Board, right, Water Resources Control Board, we're in Region Nine. So that Regional Board would be issuing us a permit to be able to access the channels. And then I believe that would be the four oh one, basically an annualized permit to be able to, to be able to operate within that, within that, their jurisdiction. So this, this channel would represent the jurisdiction of all three agencies, so the Regional Water Quality Control Board, US Department of Fish and, Fish and I'm sorry, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and what's the other one?
It's the Army Corps of Engineer, or are they, are they kind of out of it now?
No, Army Corps of Engineers, so all three of those, and they, they all have, have their own permits. Are, the annual permit could be with all three agencies, or it may be, only be with one or two of them. So we're still kind of sorting out what the framework of that annual permit is going to be. We're currently in discussions actually with the Regional Water Quality Control Board on, on what that would look like under their program. It will for sure include them. We think that the Corps is probably gonna be included in that permit, and we're not quite sure about Fish and Wildlife.
Does the permit, does a permit cover all the washes that we have, or is it just specific to this one?
It's gonna, it's gonna cover specific locations and define what we can do and what we can't do in those locations. In this location, it, we would probably be defining it specifically as, as like a dredging permit, to be able to dredge out the sand material that's here. You see, there's not a lot, a lot of vegetation here, so we wouldn't be anticipating vegetation removal as necessarily being a problem. Vegetation removal in this area may not be included in that permit. We have other areas like adjacent to Mira to Hot Springs Road, over by, between Schoolhouse. There's a channel that, that drains into Warm Springs Creek, that plugs up every year and, and becomes a big maintenance problem, it's a big headache for us. That area is gonna be another area where, where we're gonna have some, some area where we'll be looking to add that to the permit. So primarily in the areas specifically around our, our crossings, roadway crossings, where drainages cross roadways. Those are gonna be the locations where we're gonna be looking at applying the maintenance permit. So it won't be every drainage in town, it would be huge cost prohibitive to maintain all of that. Mostly areas like this that you see where it's a problem.
Comment on, on the vegetation, I'll come back to, but as far, so as far as the annual permit, and you, you had mentioned that it was gonna be between one and two million dollars, is, is that for the permit? Is that to do all the research and studies and whatnot that's needed to apply for the permit?
That would be all of it.
That'd be all of it, and so, so when you say an annual permit, is this something that will have to renew annually? Or it will give you access, you know, during different seasons of the year?
I do anticipate there will be an annual maintenance fee that would be going along with that permit.
But that won't be one to two million dollars a, a year?
I, I don't believe so, no. There probably will be some initial mitigation effort that will have to be underway, in particular, if you have an area that has existing vegetation. You may have to mitigate for that vegetation removal for, on year one. And as long as it stays trimmed in the future years, if you let it get back out of control, then you may have to pay, pay another mitigation fee. If you allowed it to stay, you know, trimmed and whatnot, then the annual fee I would, I think would be maybe more controlled. But I think there's always gonna be a mitigation fee required of the agencies on an annual basis.
Yeah, okay. You know, and speaking of this, of this exact location, and, and Commissioner Vroom, and I don't know if you walk over there or not. But I, I did notice, Mr. Hitch, that beyond the picture on the right, where you can see that the, the sand ends. There's a bunch of dead vegetation from that point, kind of wrapping around the corner that parallels the old airport, which I believe the city owns. Down towards Sykes Ranch Park, and there's a bunch of just dead trees, dead vegetation, tamarisk and, you know, arunda and stuff like that in there. So much that in this, in this wet season that we just had, I noticed that it was eroding about thirty to forty feet into the old airport, and there's some erosion that you can see like the, the the barbed wire fence just kind of dangling there in the air because it's eroded, you know, into the airport area, you know, pretty substantially in two different areas, have you seen that? So I don't know if vegetation clearing may be necessary, like from those two points that I, that I pointed out. Because it's pretty bad, and you can see obviously the water is gonna go a path of less resistance, right? And it's starting to scour, you know, up and down that property there. So definitely something to take a look at, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, because unless you're walking over there, you know, taking the kids on a bike ride or something, no one really goes over there, but I, I did notice that, and I meant to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and we can add that to the list of areas to keep an eye on. I don't know if that's an area that we need to be dealing with, is, and whether or not that, that erosion is a, is a, is kind of a problem. If it is, that's something we can, we can potentially add to, to the annual permit be able to give us the ability to go in and deal with that area.
Well, I think, yeah, and not necessarily, right, like it's not really affecting, you know, anybody, it's eroding away really the city property. Not too, not too big of a deal, and I could be wrong on this, but it seems like maybe if some of that dead vegetation was removed that we would get better water flow from this specific area downstream. Because it, it is, it's just, it's crazy how much, how much dead material is in there. So maybe just something to take a look at if, if, if you
Absolutely.
Get over there, take a look.
No, I appreciate you bringing it up.
No problem. Okay, the Menifee Road Improvement over off of the new extension of Clinton Keith. So you said that that's being held up because there's like a blue line stream going through there, or there's a, there's a something?
I, I hope it's not a blue line stream. So there, there actually is a small pipe that runs underneath Menifee Road. Whoever built this dirt road must have put in, it's like a six inch or an eight inch green PVC pipe that was put in as a temporary, kind of a temporary covert, just across the dirt road as a private property, and would do. This is a privately maintained road as far as we're concerned, the city does not maintain it.
Really?
Yeah, it's not currently maintained by the city, we don't, I would say from time to time, we go out and blade it.
Yeah, is it in our, is it in our city limits or jurisdiction, or why, why don't we maintain it, I guess?
Well, we don't maintain a lot of dirt roads out in the Los Alamos Hills area. Really, the only roads that we maintain are roads that have been built to a city standard. There's really the only, before Clinton Keith got constructed, we never did any work on this piece of Menifee Road. Now that the Clinton Keith is, was constructed, now we're, we're kind of forced into a scenario where we have to send a blade out there to go deal with that a little bit.
Yeah, like the washboard that develops.
Yeah, the, the only other dirt road in town that we've, that we historically maintain is, is the old Briggs Road. If you've been out there, you know, kind of parallel to Clinton Keith Road, of course, that's gonna all go away through the development. And now that Clint Keith is built, that's really not gonna be needed much anymore. But all the other dirt roads that you see like out in the Los Alamos Hills or on the, back on the west side of town, those are all privately maintained. The city doesn't maintain those roads.
So, so we are trying, or the city is trying to permit to pave this, or you said at least two lanes you want to get paved?
Correct.
Okay, and what's holding, what's holding that up?
Well, we just started the design process, but the, there's a variety of issues that are a problem. This roadway is in a MSHCP, MSHCP criteria cell. And I don't believe Menifee Road is shown on the circulation element in the MSHCP plan. So we're kind of preparing for the potential battle that we may have with the regulatory agencies. And, and whether or not they're gonna be, they're gonna be resistant to us building that road.
Yeah, so it's a dirt, it's a dirt road now that vehicles travel up and down every day, but it's, it's still MHA, M A, M H S C P cell.
It's still in a criteria cell, and, and so that doesn't change, the question is whether we can convince them that it's clearly a road there today. All we're doing is paving the surface of the road. So if we're successful with that, then, then there won't be any issue, it's just, we never know what we're gonna run into with, with certain regulatory agencies, so sometimes they just wanna make it difficult for us. I think we'll be successful with it, it's just how long it takes. We're hoping that the biologists, when they do their evaluation, that they determine that this is not a jurisdictional water body, meaning a blue line stream that would require any sort of permitting. I'm hopeful that that's going to be the case and that we're gonna be successful in that endeavor. If that takes place, then, then this project may move along relatively smoothly.
Hope so, hope so, that's silly. Okay, my last question is, you had mentioned about the Los Alamos Sports Park, the maintenance yard that's up there. I think it's like the Old Yellow House.
Oh, yeah.
Above Los Alamos. And it just sparked my memory that someone had asked me about the city possibly building more soccer fields along the Los Alamos Sports Park, I guess it's just adjacent or just west, excuse me, just north of the existing fields. Is there any, anything going on with that? It was just a, a parent from, from our little league team was asking, so.
So I'm gonna probably defer this, I mean, the, there are, so again, this is an RCA issue or a regu- an issue, again, dealing with MSHCP. There's, there's resistance from those agencies in, in allowing the development of this area because of the, and I'm, I'm gonna let, is I was, or even Mr. Ramaya, I think Mr. Ramaya would be able to speak, I think, on the issues surrounding MSHCP. I was, or even Mr. Ramaya, I think Mr. Ramaya would be able to speak, I think, on the issues surrounding MSHCP. And kind of the resistance that we're running into related to that project.
Hello, Mr. Ramaya.
Hey, good evening, Commissioners. Commissioner La Paglia, you asked about the status of, I believe, Phase Two of Los Alamos Sports Park, which currently City Council has directed us to. Try to see if we can convert that Phase Two to six soccer fields. The location of those properties that we have are in an area that the RCA feels that there would be more open space rather than impacted areas. We actually have a meeting in a couple of weeks, let's have another discussion with them, and we'll learn more as a result of that meeting. But currently, um, we are facing some biological concerns from other governments. Uh, in order for us to move forward on that project, we're going to have to have their concurrence, and it may take a worthwhile effort in doing so.
So this is, this is wanting to build soccer fields, um, in dedicated open space, right? But, you know, I understand that there's the concern of the MHCP, and, you know, you have to get RCA approval and blah, 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 but am I, am I hearing this right?
Not to try to get into the weeds on this one, but i- if you look at the MSACP with criteria cells. The cells require us to have a certain percentage within the cell to be salvaged. Let's just say that fifty percent of that cell on the eastern side has to be put in open space. That's what we're counting up. If you look at the development patterns, we're at a, we're not achieving our current targets with the MSACP. So in trying to design six soccer fields in the middle of a planned programmatic corridor. It's challenging, but again, staff has some creative ideas. We are going to be meeting with, uh, the agencies again on this matter, and we're very hopeful, uh, to, um, receive some partnership in that endeavor. But I can't make any promises today, I would say that we're right in the middle of a very focused discussion on that project.
Okay, all right, thank you, I'll report that back. That's all I have, uh, thank you for the thorough explanation, uh, this is my, my favorite, uh, topic of the year, so. Sorry for my long questions, guys, uh, but thank you, Mr. Hitch, thank you, uh, Mr. Mendoza, and Chair.
Thank you.
Move on to the next.
Thank you, Commissioner La Paglia. Commissioner Vrumen?
Yes. Thank you for a great presentation, and I can tell for all the staff here in the room, um, there's a lot of thought. Priorities and, uh, what the needs of the cities are. And, you know, a lot of this stuff has been, you know, on the list for quite some time, and it's nice to see that, especially the stuff on Myrieta Hot Springs and the traffic. Issues such as the turn pocket, the widening of Myrieta Hot Springs Road, all these things kind of finally, you know, coming through, it's been a long, long term coming. Basically, I remember when the Sam's Club first came in, I remember the, the widening and the, that, in the number three lane, the swell that had to be kind of taken out right there. And then as soon as that opened up, then, uh, it, it, you know, started the stacking right there. So it's nice to see that that's, that's finally coming about. And I do like Mr. La Paglia's idea about maybe even another additional, maybe a, a simple turn pocket at that second entrance might help. You know, kind of mitigate some, uh, some of the traffic, because it stacks up right there, right at the freeway off ramp, so, um, great job on that. I was, I was writing down different areas of town, and as you were going through, Jeff, you know, you, I'm like, okay, I'm going to scratch this one off. You, 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 you hit every single one, especially the Menifee and Los Alamos, and made me want to comment after, after Mr. La Paglia. Mentioned it, and then you'd said, hey, you know, it might have to be some biological expert come out, maybe it's on a day when the residents are out there. Basically dragging it and, and flattening out the surface themselves, because, uh, separate from the city, that's who's maintaining that dirt stretch there. The, the homeowners out there are actually doing, doing, uh, a lot of, especially after some of the rains, before the city has a chance to, to, to get out there and actually do that. So, um, that's great that that's on the, the city's radar. The Leafwood slash Milkwood Hancock, um, intersection there. I know that's, that was old county design intersection there, and, um, I know the southbound lanes, for a period of time, I think it, I don't know if it was a. A traffic mitigation or calming measure where it narrowed, instead of two lanes going southbound into one. Will this signalized improvement here, is that going to, uh, put it back to, to two lanes going south, or, or what's the, what's the plan there?
A good question, Commissioner Vrumen, um, no, it won't do that. The only thing this is going to do is, is add protected, uh, left turn movements, um, at the intersection. I believe that the issue is surrounding the left turn, or the reason why it breaks, it, it goes down to one lane is we have a, because of the curvature.
It's a line of sight.
There's a line of sight distance issue, uh, that creates a significant safety issue. And so because of that, that, that's the reason why, and I don't know that there's a good solution to remove that. As it sits now, the volume of traffic hasn't been such that it, it really creates a, a problem for that area. So at the moment, we feel that, that the, because of the, the way the volume of traffic that runs through there, that it's operating at, at a, at an acceptable level, I would say. But it's definitely an area that we continue to look at, um, every now and again, it, we look at it again to see if there's something else we can do there to, to reopen that to two lanes. And it's always determined it's, it's better to leave it as it currently sits based on the way it's currently operating, so. But we, we keep it on our list of things to look at.
Uh, sounds good. Back to the open channel, I didn't really think about this, but, um, the one on, um, Washington and Cuyahoga, I'd drive by that, you know, quite often. In fact, I remember when it was first built, and it, and you're right, it was four feet underneath Washington there, just continually, um, you know, stacks up with sand there. Every, every winter or after every storm season there. Is there anything the city can do on the east side of the, of Washington Avenue where the, the land is currently undeveloped? I think, I don't know if, I think it's single family, um, it was commercial and got rezoned many, many years ago. Is that something that cannot be improved or done to basically stop the, the, the flow of the, the sediment coming through? As opposed to dredging every single year and going after the permits? Is there something on the other side that can be mitigated to prevent this?
Yeah, it's a great question, uh, and thank you for that, um, the answer is yes. So this is Line G, Line G is also a master drainage plan facility. We do have plans to eventually do something similar to what we're doing into Line F here on Line G. At a minimum from Washington up to where Line G crosses Nutmeg Street, right there, just, uh, right there at Adams. And the idea would be exactly as you described, all the sedimentation that you see here is actually coming from that stretch between Washington Avenue and Nutmeg. The, it's a big project, um, and it's, you know, we currently have a overactive CIP budget, as, as, you know. Based on the staffing levels, so primarily it's going to be added, um, as we can add projects like that. Definitely is a project that we want to do, I think once we construct Line F, unless we're able to get, um, substantially more funding from Flood Control. Then we're going to be kind of be out of funding to be able to do Line, Line G. So some of what happens with Line F is going to be somewhat of a, of a roadmap for how we deal now with this Line, Line G. It's definitely a, a project that we want to do. In fact, frankly, I think even downstream from, from here, I think Commissioner La Paglia has identified, um, you know, the, kind of the problems between here and, and the airport. The old Bear Creek Airport down there. You know, potentially doing some improvements on this channel to help keep it in a ma- maintainable condition. Might be something we, we may also be looking at, um, in the future, so, good question.
So that, we could work on that independently, whether or not that property develops, but I imagine that, uh, if it did, that that would somehow. Maybe move the development of that, uh, extension of the channel, um, upstream a little bit quicker if it, if it somehow did develop versus. If it didn't, then we'd be on the hook to make those site improvements ourselves, right?
Well, I, I believe that property did become entitled, um, I, I don't know what happened with that project, if it, if the entitlements, um, expired or not. And I think the entitlement that was done on that property, I think their plan was to. Was to remove the creek channel from that development and put up maybe some sort of, uh, sheet piling or something that would protect their facility from the channel. Uh, and, but keep the channel separate and dedicate that channel to the city, I believe that's what their intent was.
Thank you. And, uh, again, since Mr. La Paglia brought this up, and, uh, with the ownership, the city owns what the old, uh, Bear Creek Airport, uh, property there. One of the things to notice, obviously with, um, you know, you know, kids going to school, you know, the, going to Thompson Middle School typically, and they'll connect. You know, uh, on that property, uh, with Sykes Ranch Park and, and come in that way. Is there any plans as far as a trail system that would kind of connect it with whatever the city, the city owns at this point in time? Is there any kind of, uh, thought process of doing that, and it would come part and parcel to the, obviously the, the creek, the way it connects with Myrieta Creek right there? The Line G with Myrieta Creek.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to toss this question over to Mr. Ambrose, um, and we do have a, a trail system that is, that is currently, um, in discussion. In particular with other agencies like Wildemar, uh, and Temecula, uh, to help with, um, a trail system that goes along Myrieta Creek, but.
Sure, so, uh, that area is considered a part of the Myrieta Creek Trail System, which runs from City of Temecula up to, uh, the lake, up in Lake Elsinore. Uh, City of Myrieta is the only city of the four that has not completed their sections, and that's because there's a couple of bridges that we would need to, to, uh, uh, install. Fortunately, the city put out an RFP very recently to do a parks master plan update, and the first ever trails master plan. So we're reviewing the proposals that came in, and we will probably bring a, uh, recommendation before the City Council in June. And once that happens, it'll be probably about a year long, maybe an eighteen month long process of, of trying to connect all those trail systems. And figure out the potential funding impacts and how we could, uh, bridge the funding to complete that trail system.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Ambrose.
You're welcome.
One of the other, um, I noticed on one of the, the list here, um, the street name. Uh, project, um, I think it's, uh, project number one, three, zero, five, five, uh, that's been kind of ongoing. It wasn't in your presentation, but it's, uh, on the list here. I know it's a project that started about maybe six or seven years ago, and that's, um, updating all the city's street signs to the common. Blue with the white lettering, or the, if they're private streets, the white, uh, the white signs with the blue lettering.
Correct. It's, it's basically converting the, the original green signs to blue signs, correct?
Yeah, because I know in, in different parts of the city, no matter, uh, depending on where you go, Colony, other places like that, you still have the count, the old county green street signs without the hundred block numbering on there. Um, and then you have this kind of what I call the second generation, which is the green ones after the city incorporated. With the white lettering, and then the flip flop of that, you know, for the private streets.
Right.
There's, as you drive about the city, and this is, you know, not just an aesthetic type of thing like that, but also I, I, as a public safety. You know, um, even though we got mapping, those type of things like that, but if for some reason it didn't, didn't work. I, I see they, they're reflective, they glow in the dark, it's a, it's a safety feature. I just was wondering, how long will that project take to, to finally complete it? I know it's, it seems like maybe a half or three quarters of the city is done, but, but, uh, a lot has not been done.
Yeah, thank you for that question, I, I, that's a question I probably, uh, I'm going to need to probably check in with our, with our Public Works Maintenance Manager and, and see where that is. Uh, we don't, uh, for that project, we have not been hiring a consultant to go out and do that installation, or a contractor to, to do that installation. It's done, um, as our maintenance crews have, have availability. You are correct, though, the, the, part of the reason we do street sign replacements, and it's not just those, those signs we'll obviously replace. But we also replace other signs around town, stop signs and things like that. The, the signs are supposed to have a certain, um, uh, reflectivity, um, there's a way that you can measure the reflectivity of a sign. And we're supposed to me, we're supposed to replace signs as the, the value of that sign, uh, drops down to a, a certain level. We recently did a sign inventory program to evaluate all of our signs, uh, and we're still putting a program together to eventually re, you know, continue to replace other street signs around town. We can evaluate if, uh, if, there hasn't been a large, um, drive, I think, uh, from either community members or even council at the moment. To, um, uh, accelerate the street sign replacement program. But the point is taken that there's, there are signs that are out there that are not, um, that are losing their reflectivity. And maybe, maybe, you know, pertinent to try and get those done a little sooner than later. I would point out, I think you mentioned the colony during that discussion, the colony are private streets. And the city only replaces signs within public right of way. So when you see the, the white sign with blue lettering, that would be on a, a private street intersecting a public road. We would not be replacing street name signs, generally speaking, on a private street.
And the, and the only reason I, yeah, public safety, obviously.
So the signs, well, generally speaking, the signs within the colony would not be signs that the city would replace, because they're not our signs.
Those signs, if you go inside the colony and look, they, they've totally lost their reflectiveness, and, um, they don't match anything as far as, I'm kind of looking at it from a city pride perspective. Uh, but then also there's a practicality, there's a safety, because fire mo- more particularly responds in there quite routinely. And I know, I'm just saying, you know, people that live in the colony, they paid the measure T, you know, they voted on that and everything, so. Funding wise, I don't know if there's a way to, to basically work with their HOA or whatever to, to, to somehow. Fix that, you know, from a public safety standpoint and response to, because they. They respond to private communities just as much as they do, uh, you know, public streets, right, the houses on public streets, so, just.
Certainly, certainly something we can take a look at, um, historically, we don't, we don't, I mean, I understand, I understand the concerns that you're raising, and, and those are certainly issues that we can, that we can bring forward. But historically, we don't, we don't maintain private streets.
Um, and then also kind of closely related to that is, um, you know, the entrances to the city. Is there any plan somewhat related to that doing, you know, marquees, um, uh, especially at, at intersections that aren't going, or, you know, city limits that where they, but other cities? And the, the boundaries are not, not going to change, is there a plan to, uh, to have, you know, city entrance signs either as marquees? Or simply, there are some other areas of the city that, you know, we annexed areas, or, uh, along the Winchester Corridor where we don't, you don't know if you're in the city or if you're not in the city. To, to, to put city limit signs up, is there, is that part of the process for this project as well, too?
Well, as far as I know, we have city limit signs at all the entry points, I'm not familiar with one that doesn't.
South, on, on Winchester Road as you come into the city, um, uh, up near Max Gillis right there. That sign was knocked down years ago, and.
Oh, really?
Yeah, has never been replaced.
Well, it's a, so Max Gillis is a complicated one, because the majority of Max Gillis is actually in the county. We actually own a small sliver of Max Gillis on the south side. So we wouldn't be able to put a street name sign on Max Gillis itself, because the whole north side of Max Gillis.
Right.
Is in, is in the county. I guess in the westbound, I can talk to Romania's folks about, uh, whether or not we could, we would want to add one.
There, there was one on, uh, as you come southbound on Winchester Road, uh, as you cross Max Gillis in the city, and then. Uh, an accident knocked it out and never replaced, but some of the other entrances, yeah.
On Winchester itself, or on?
Yeah, on Winchester, as you're driving southbound on Winchester Road.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can, I can, I can raise that with her. Winchester Road gets complicated, and it's, that's a Caltrans operated roadway, um, we can't install signs along Winchester without getting an encroachment permit from Caltrans. So we can take a look at that and see if that's something that needs to be added, I wasn't aware of whether or not that was there or not, so we can, I'll definitely look at that.
Oh, that's great, uh, but i- is there a plan that you know of as far as like some of the, uh, marquees for the entrances?
It's a, that's a good question, um, and by entrances, I assume you mean the freeways, or are you?
No, as you're coming maybe northbound, uh, let's say Jefferson, or southbound Washington, or, uh, from, you know, into the city, something. It, it, you know, as you drive into different cities, they have nice signs that say, hey, welcome to, you know, whatever city it is, or.
Right, all of our, all of the signs we have are standard green signs, um, and probably not what you're, what you're thinking.
Right.
The, we currently have no plans in engineering, I know economic development had, at one point, was discussing potentially doing something to. Do some either artistry or whatnot, and, you know, entries, I, I think they were talking more, uh, like freeway interchange type, type scenario, or, you know, some sort of artwork or whatnot. Similar to maybe like what you might see up at. similar to maybe like what you might see up at Paris or whatnot, or Lake Elsinore even. I don't know whether or not there's been any, any traction on anything of that nature. Those projects tend to be really expensive, is, is, I think, where the problem lies.
Just a thought, just a, you know...
Certainly, I could certainly break it up and...
As I, as I see other cities have that, it'd be kind of an enhanced feature, I thought, would be, would be nice. And the last question I have, public safety-related, Fire Station Six. Do we have a location where that might go? I know it was kind of just generally mentioned the east end, or is there a exact site, or?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to the fire chief on that.
Thank you for the question. Currently, we do not have a location for the site. We're just looking for something in that northeast portion of the city to serve the area that we're underserved currently.
And if the city were to maybe annex part of the sphere, I imagine that, that would probably change the location where Site Six may eventually be.
I think where, the area we're looking for would not change if we were, if the city were to do any annexations up further in the sphere, 'cause we still have that area south of there that we have to serve.
And then, is the, is the city's plan or the fire department's plan, much like Fire Station Four, where there's a police substation? That was kind of, I know, years ago, kind of the thought is to build each fire station with a, with a police substation attachment to it if need be. Is that still within the plan?
That's certainly our plan. It depends on the site, we get how much land we have available and what kind of footprint we need. But our plan will always be to have PD available at our stations.
Good. That's, that's pretty much it for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner of the Room. Commissioner Joe Wacha?
Thank you for the presentation. I feel like it's Christmas in May. Just had a couple, just real quick questions. Back to fire, there was an item to replace a fire truck that's 20-plus years old. Are, are they surplusing the one that they're gonna be removing? Or they're gonna keep it, or what are they doing with that one?
Currently, all of our fleet will remain in reserve status. So any replacement vehicle that we bring in will replace a vehicle that will move to reserve status.
Okay, thank you for that. And then, just real quick on the open channel maintenance program, is the plan to at least dredge it somewhat now since it's so high? Or do you have to wait for the permitting? With the sand sediment?
Are we referring to the line F project?
This one, yeah, right here.
Next to Camia? Oh, this chan, so this project?
Yeah.
This, so this is talking about, so this project is not just this channel, and I, hopefully I didn't mislead everybody in thinking that it's just this channel. It's, it's, it's basically all the channels that have maintenance problems such as this. And we have several locations around town that have this type of a situation. And the idea here would be to restore this channel back to its originally intended condition, which means dredging some of the sand material to get it down to a level that allows for the covert. As you can see, the covert on the right side there is almost completely buried. So we would need to drop this, the elevation of the bottom of this channel down to a level that allows these other coverts to function properly.
I guess my question, though, is, can you engage temporary measures to at least remove some of it now? Or do you have to wait for that permitting process?
We can, but those temporary measures also require permits, would require individual permits. And then, of course, require mitigation fees associated with doing that activity. So there's, there's, and we probably will, frankly, in the case of this channel.
Yeah.
If we had another wet season like we did this season, I think I just heard that over the last eight months, 10 months, we've had 25 inches of rain, if you can believe that. Probably one of the wettest winters we've had in some time. If we had another one of those next year, then we, yes, we would have to do something with this.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Wacha. Vice Chair Harlan?
Boy, lots of good stuff going on indeed, right? Couple of questions. I'm looking at Attachment Two, which is the capital improvement plan project summary that was, was sent out in advance of the meeting. So just kind of looking at, talking through the headings here, right? So under general plan policy, each project number obviously has a name, description, the category goes under. I see plan policy references anywhere from one reference, in some cases, several. Is there any significance to the number of general plan policies referenced? Are we just looking for one?
I might have to defer to the planning department with regards to the policies, but these policies were provided by the respective project managers as it, how it relates to the general plan 2035 policies.
Yeah, I mean, so in general, Vice Chair Harlan, we would look for capital improvement projects to be consistent with at least a policy. But when there are multiple policies, it's kind of like bonus, right? Consistency with the general plan. But we want, we look to see that they're consistent with at least one policy.
So there's no point system for how many you have? Okay, 'cause on some of these, it just listed one, for example. As you look through there, I think an argument could be made to, to reference a couple others. But as long as you have one, that's what you're looking for?
Yeah, that's correct.
On... So what we're going through here, right, gets, goes to a June hearing in front of the city council. Just as I, kind of going through this initially, right, and then seeing the staff report, which is outstanding, by the way, with the details. Is there a value add if you look at project 21034, which has 12 lines of description? And if I go down to 21037, 21038, and 21039, there's five words. Initially, when I read through this and prepared for it, right, the questions were, okay, what exactly is this? The presentation certainly covered that. And I, I get it that this is a summary. But is this an opportunity perhaps maybe to beef up the descriptions in advance of that June hearing?
Let me defer to Chief Malloy with regards to 21034, the regional training center planning and development project. With regards to value add, the respective project managers give us, give the finance and public works departments their, their input, and we, we give you, we give you what they provide. But let me have Chief Malloy discuss further the actual value add of those significant projects.
And what I mean by value add is, let's say, someone from the public, just general awareness of what it is that we're looking to accomplish is all. Makes sense?
Yes, that makes sense.
Certainly. So the projects we add, we have a five-year planning process that we have been asked to do. These are projects that are coming in the next five years, but are not even to the planning phase yet. So we're placing a placeholder in the CIP with some estimated funds. So for the fires, the public safety training facility, and then the station improvements, public safety training facility isn't even at its planning phase yet. We don't have plans drawn up. We're still in developing a scope of what that would look like. So we can't provide a full outline of what that's going to be yet. It will be in revisions in the future. And then the station improvements, we have some plans being drawn up for what, we have a consultant that came out and looked at what facility changes we need to make to some of our facilities. So we don't have that yet, so we can't go into the description of what exactly that will be, per se. But we do have the ability to say that the project is coming, and we're identifying it in the CIP, and more will come when we actually have the, the parameters of each of those projects.
Can I just add to, so this is a summary that was provided in the staff report, but the actual CIP is much...
Much more in-depth, correct?
And that's what goes to city council, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. La Paglia brought up vegetation, as long as we have the fire department here. I received a couple notices in the mail on weed abatement here recently. And when I called into the, the number there, the, I live up against a wildlife preserve there. He, I was instructed that the city got the bulk of the notices that went out? Are we prepared? 25 inches of rain reminded me when I lived in Seattle here recently. Are we prepared to, does that something that perhaps need to be in here? Do we have that covered?
That is something that Public Works Maintenance is currently evaluating and looking at. And you are correct, we did receive, I believe it was 44 notices from the police department. The city owns property, just like the residents own property. And so we're subject to those same notifications from the fire department as, as anybody else. Those are things that we are analyzing and looking at and determining whether or not we have sufficient funding to deal with. And if we don't, then that's an issue that we'll have to bring forward to either add funding to be able to address those, those needs. These are things that we actively work with the fire department on to make sure that we're being safe for, you know, or, you know, for the city's needs and showing, I think, even a good example for the citizens that need to be doing the same.
Thank you. A question on the Slurry Seal project. Is, kind of help educate us. So on Slurry Seal, is that primarily cosmetic? Does it prevent cracking, you know, weeds growing through, et cetera? I'm looking at that kind of eight-year timeline, you know, that you gave us on that. And I think it's fantastic, there's a plan to cover the whole city. It looks great when it's initially done? Just kind of walk me through that eight-year breakdown, and is it cosmetic, or does it, should it crack?
Well, I think residents like to see it as cosmetic. We get a lot of complaints when, when, so, Slurry Seal, as you can see even in this photo here, you know, you see it's nice and dark gray on one side, and it's, it's light gray on, on the side that hasn't been completed yet. That's, that happens due to oxidization of the roadway. The sun, you know, interacts with the oils and whatnot on the surface, turns it to that light gray. You get surface cracking. Surface cracking is expected in asphalt. Asphalt is a, is a flexible pavement structure. If you get a lot of cracking, then that, that starts to indicate now significant problems with your actual structural section that you, that you might have to, to address. The cracking that you see in the photo here is more indicative of like what we call block cracking, where you kind of get these large blocks in there. And that's largely from shrinkage cracking of the, of the road, where the, the road starts to, starts to just degrade from impact from the sun. The fix for those are typically applying, as you can see here, they've applied a crack fill. It's a, it's, it's a, an asphalt-type material that gets placed down in the cracks. It's applied with heat. The idea is to fill in those cracks as well as possible, to seal the cracks. You want to try to eliminate moisture transition from the surface down into the, into the substructure. So from, first part of your question, is it aesthetic? Yeah, I think there's a part of it that says aesthetic. But our main focus here really is, is extending the longevity of that roadway. If we didn't apply a Slurry Seal, then the oxidization that, that you see that's taking place continues to start to unravel the road. If you've seen an old asphalt road that's sat there for 20, 30 years without any maintenance, all the oils on the surface come out, and the agri gets, starts to pop out of the surface of the road. If you've gotten to that point, you're too far. A Slurry Seal's not gonna fix it, you're gonna have to do some other remediation to it. You want to hit that road with the Slurry Seal before it gets to that point. You're basically applying new oils to the roadway. The oils and the slurry is a sacrificial layer that comes off over time, the wearing of cars driving over it and oxidation. And then, and then you can reapply that every eight years, and then you can keep that road in a better condition.
So if we're looking at an eight-year breakdown, I think you put eight to 10 in there, should it stay fairly set three, four years in? I mean, as, as far as, how, how do you see that looking years six, seven, eight? Does it deteriorate quickly?
It's gonna look like what you see here in front of this truck. It's, is, you know, what you see on the other side of the road that's dark gray will look like what you see in front of the truck in seven or eight years. That's what I would anticipate. As these roads continue to get older, it, it may be that the, we may have to change from an eight-year transition program to a seven-year program, or maybe a six-year program. There's a lot of factors that go into that, based on the changes in oil. The oils that we use today are not the same oils that they used 10 years ago, 15 years ago. The oil makeup has, has changed a little bit over the years. We're seeing that the current oils and the current asphalt don't last as long as they used to because of the makeup of the way the oils were done previously. So that all influences the decisions that we have on the way we maintain the roads. Right now, I think an eight-year program, we believe, will, will be successful, at least for the near future. These are things that we continue to evaluate. And if, if they're not meeting those requirements, then, then we, we may have to amp it up to more. Of course, if you do it more frequently than that, your costs go up substantially.
Appreciate the 101 on that, thank you.
Absolutely.
All good, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Harlan. I have just a couple of questions. On the slides that you showed us, are there any restricted funds on any of those?
I'm sorry, which specific slides, or most, of most of the projects?
Are most of those projects with restricted funds already applied to them?
Yes. So as I stated earlier, some of the funding sources that are going to be applied to the respective projects have restrictions like DIF funding, or if it's grant-related. So those are restricted in nature. Gas tax and SB1, Mr. Hitch can elaborate the use of that, but those are restricted for that specific purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, just to elaborate a little bit, just about every project that we have has restricted funding when we're talking about CIP funds. We, very few of our projects use general fund money. Almost all of our projects are using some form of a, of a, either gas tax. Measure A is a, is a, was a one-cent sales tax that was approved by the voters of Riverside County decades ago. We get a lot of Measure A funding that supports our road improvement projects. As Mr. Mendoza referenced, our DIF fees, which are development impact fees that comes from our development program to build streets that are a result of development in the community that requires the addition of those streets. So a lot of those fundings, and those, those, all that funding has specific requirements. And you kind of have to stay in their own swim lane. I think I mentioned the, like the line F, for example, we're using area drainage fees. Those are fees that come to us from Riverside County to, to deal with drainage programs. I couldn't use gas tax, for example, on, on line F, because gas tax is intended to be for street repair or street work that's being done. I can't use DIF fees, for example, for the maintenance of existing roads. I couldn't use DIF for Slurry Seal program, for example. DIF is only for new improvements that come from the program. So those are the kind of examples of, of all of these. But I would say, yes, every of these, every one of these projects has some, some certain amount of restriction to the fees.
In the Garden Project, the Vista Myrieta Project, and the Monroe Avenue Project, you mentioned on the Garden Project something about Cash and Lou. Can you explain that?
I don't know that we referenced Cash and Lou in relation to the Garden Project. Do you mean the Garden Project next to the library?
Yes.
I'm sorry, those are grant projects. Mr. Rosellis is here to further explain the funding source of that project?
All three of those projects? 'Cause they're all fairly new projects, correct?
Correct. So the Pollinator Garden Project is paid partly by the California State Library and Western Water. The Library Storytime Room and Children's Air Expansion is paid for by the California State Library grant. The Library Community Room retrofit, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm unsure that is not grant-paid. Those are not grant funds.
Would they come out of the general fund?
Currently, we are proposing, I believe that's part of Measure T.
Thank you. Sir, welcome. Were you gonna add something there to us?
Thank you, Chair. No, I think Mr. Mendoza pretty much covered the funding sources for all three library projects. I can... I can elaborate if you need further detail.
No, that's fine. The Vista Marietta Project is new, and the Monroe Avenue Project is new since the budget was developed. So are there monies being traded off to complete these projects, or are these new projects that are gonna be budgeted into the necessary timeframe?
Well, these, both these projects are being added to the CIP, so they will be CIP projects. We are adding money, funding for these two projects. I believe it's $200,000 each, and I believe we're funding it with gas tax, if I recall. And the, the purpose of funding that is, is to basically provide some seed money to the project, to do some preliminary design work if, if needed. The idea at the moment is to see what development is going to bring to us with these. We think that there's gonna be, and the other reason for adding these projects is, is we are anticipating developers coming in, being conditioned to, to either build a portion of that road, or to pay a cash and new fair share to build a portion of that road. And when we receive those cash and new funds, they need a, the finance department needs a place to put the funds. These CIP projects would be the place for those funds to go, and the city would use those funds to construct the improvements, along with additional capital funds that we would have to secure elsewhere, gas tax or Measure A, for example.
So there's your cash and lieu that I was asking about?
Yes. The cash and lieu would be related to, to, Vista Marietta Road in particular is one I'm thinking of, where I think we may have a project that may be conditioned to, to apply, to, to pay cash and lieu instead of improving that road. They may pay cash and lieu instead. I, I think that's still in discussion, in a negotiation with the developer, so we'll see how that comes to pass.
And all of these projects that you've pointed out to us tonight are part, they're in conformance with the general plan of 2035? Am I correct in that statement?
Yes, Chair. We are, we are, the project managers believe that these projects, the new additions to the CIP are in conformance to general plan 2035.
Okay, thank you. I'm always amazed at our city, and especially the planning department, the engineering department, and all the rest of you that are here within the department. On just the fabulous job you do, especially the fire department, police department. It's just an amazing city to work with and to listen to the presentations that you give because they're in-depth. You are all knowledgeable about what you're doing, and as a commissioner, I'm just appreciative of you and the presentations that you make for all of us, as well as my fellow commissioners and their input that they're giving at these meetings, too. So I thank you very much. Madam, Madam Secretary, are there any public comments?
Seeing none.
Seeing none. Can we put up the recommendation?
If I may, Chair, so before we make a motion, we were made aware right before the meeting tonight that the city attorney has some suggested revisions to the resolution. So what we, what we'd like to do is, if the commission could, as part of their recommended action, make a recommendation to staff to incorporate the city attorney's revisions into the resolution, and then we would say, staff, staff anticipates bringing the item back as a consent item to the commission in two weeks, we think. But if you could recommend to staff to incorporate the city attorney's revisions to the resolution, that would be helpful.
And do we know what those revisions are?
We just received, staff just received them at the time of the, the meeting, so I, I wasn't able to make those available to you, and so in, in this case, we need to give those to staff and have staff bring the resolution back to you.
Okay.
And if the city attorney wanted to add on?
Yes, thank you. And so just to clarify, they are not substantive changes in the sense that any of the findings would change, it's just the formatting. So it would be the city attorney's preference that the last two recitals contained in the resolution actually be incorporated into the findings section of the resolution, as long as some minor were changing. But it's still substantively the same resolution that you would be passing here today.
All right, thank you very much. With that said, do I have a motion that would incorporate that language?
So I, I just want to clarify, are we being asked to approve the resolution subject to the proposed language?
Correct. And, and the final resolution would be presented to the planning commission at the next regularly scheduled meeting on the consent calendar.
Then I make a motion based on that.
Do I have a second?
And I will second, based on that.
Madam Secretary, can we have a, we have a motion and a second? Please do a roll call vote.
Chair Fisher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Harlan.
Aye.
Commissioner Vrooman.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Aye.
Commissioner La Paglia.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, and we all incorporate those in that resolution. City planner comments?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. We look forward to having a meeting in two weeks. We do have a subdivision, we think, will be on the agenda, and an ordinance, so we have a couple of things for you, and we should have this resolution on consent as well. Thank you, Chair, back to you.
City attorney comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No legal comments. I would like to say it's a pleasure to be here with you all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for visiting with us and taking on that job temporarily.
It's been my pleasure.
Will you be back in two weeks or not?
That's up to Paul.
I see, okay. Thank you very much. Any planning commission further comments from anyone?
Just thank you to all of staff for being here, especially Mr. Hitch, Mr. Mendoza. Great presentation. Again, it's my favorite time of the year to, to hear all this stuff, so thank you, and that's all.
Anyone else?
I would echo those comments. Again, you can tell a lot of thought went in by all city staff into the priorities of the city. You could tell that the people are first, I mean, you could tell what's, what, the needs of the city, and great presentation by both you and all the, all the speakers that came up, so thank you very much.
Yeah, there's a saying out there about it takes a village, and this is one heck of a village. Thank you all.
This is one of those nights where you could easily take six hours, but because of the way you present things, it only took two, so thank you for that.
And all I have to say is, thank you for all of you who are in attendance from the staff for this overtime experience. It's been a long day, I'm sure, for all of you, and we appreciate it very much that you are here to represent the city and to represent your department and your division. Thank you very much. With that said, do I have a consensus to adjourn the meeting?
You do, if you need a, a second, I would second the motion to adjourn.
All right, this meeting, this meeting is now adjourned at 7:56. Thank you.